Good evening. I call the order of this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www.minhahacounty.org site for viewing by the general public. Any final action taken on the conditional use permit application tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, June 30th at 5:00 PM. In the event of the appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, July 16th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of that meeting date, and meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, July 23rd at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are also held in this same room. Action taken on the text amendment during the public hearing tonight is a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, July 30th at or after 9:00 AM. The County Commission meetings are also held in this same room. First on the agenda, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. At that time, that will be moved to the regular agenda. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff of the audience. If you would like to be heard on any of those items, please raise your hand and that item will be removed to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any other items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. I will start reading the items on the consent agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes of May 20th, 2019. Item number two is a major amendment, 19-03 to amend section 10-0615, HOP PD Plan Development, District of the 1990 Rev. zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to change #9 on the list of permissive uses from residential, single-family dwelling to residential, two-family dwelling on the property legally described as Track 1, Seerston's Edition, Southwest Quarter, Section 32, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. The petitioners are Don and Tammy Hoff; they're also the property owners. The location is 48526-268th Street; that is located approximately six miles east of Sioux Falls. Item number three is continued use permit, 19-24 to allow manufacturing and welding metal works on the property legally described as E., East 359-65, West 902.46, South 481.5, except H-1 and H-3, Southwest Quarter, Section 15, Township 101 North, Range 51 West. Petitioner is Tyler Hofer; he is TH Custom Manufacturing. Property owner is Warren Luke, L.U.F.C.O. Incorporated. Location, 46314-265th Street, located approximately five miles south of Hartford. Item number four, conditional use permit, 19-25 to transfer two building eligibilities from the Southwest Quarter, the Northeast Quarter, and East Half. The Northeast Quarter, except H-1 and Track 2, Baker's Second Edition, including Track 1, Baker's Second Edition. Northeast Quarter, Northeast Quarter, Section 7, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, to Track 2, Baker's Edition. Northwest Quarter, Northwest Quarter, Section 8, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is David Penn; property owner is Penn LLC. That is located Southwest Corner of East Maple Street and Sixth Mile Road; that's located approximately two miles west of Brandon. Item number five, rezoning, 19-06 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, the property legally described as of the South Half, the Southeast Quarter, except Track 1 of the Southeast Quarter, except Track 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 of the Southeast Quarter. Southeast Quarter, except the North 291 feet of the East 150 feet of the South 724 feet of the West 483 feet in the Southeast Quarter. Southeast Quarter, except the West 333 feet, not including the South 433 feet of Southeast Quarter. Southeast Quarter, except the East 159.15 feet, not including the South 433 feet, except Eggers Edition in the Southwest Quarter, the Southeast Quarter, Section 9, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. The petitioner is Dean and Sandy Storham; they're also the property owner. Location is 25793-475th Avenue, located approximately 3.5 miles north of Sioux Falls. Item number six is conditional use permit, 19-26 to allow Class 1 Major Home Occupation Repair of Ag-Related Small Engines on the property legally described as Track 1, Burgraff's Edition, Southeast Quarter, Section 15, Township 104 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Colt Burgraff; he's also the property owner. Address is 46970-247th Street, located approximately five miles west of Dell Rapids. Item number seven is conditional use permit, 19-27 to allow salvage repair, collision repair with spraying paint, automotive repair, used car sales on the property legally described as lots 8 and 9, Hogg's Edition, South Half, Southeast Quarter, Section 12, Township 102 North, Range 50 West. Petitioner is Vitaly Silchuk; he's also the property owner. Location, 47184 Wild Clover Circle; that is located approximately two miles north of Sioux Falls. Okay? We will move item number seven to the regular agenda? Number six, or number eight, conditional use permit, 19-28 to allow seed and chemical sales on the property legally described as Track 9, Grimace Edition, Southeast Quarter, Southeast Quarter, Section 34, Township 104 North, Range 48 West, and the Southwest Quarter, Southwest Quarter, Section 35, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. Petitioner is Colton Grimace; property owner is Sandra Grimace. Location, 482-48-268th Street, located approximately four miles east of Sioux Falls. Okay, we'll remove item number eight to the regular agenda. Item number nine, conditional use permit, 19-29 to transfer the of one billing eligibility from the West 10 Acres of Track 3A, Hinkabell's Edition, Northwest Quarter, Northeast Quarter, to tracks 1A and 2A, Valley Springs Farm Edition, Northwest Quarter, All In Section 15, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. Petitioners Dennis and Sue Brensting; they're also the property owner, located approximately two miles south of Valley Springs. Item number 10, conditional use permit, 19-30 to allow the expansion of Class A Dairy Concentrated Animal Feeding Operation, 5,600, on the property legally described as Southeast Quarter, Section 3, Township 101 North, Range 49 West. Petitioner is Ron Krogstad; property owner is Krogstad Brothers Farms, located approximately 1.5 miles southeast of Baltic. Okay, that's all the conditional use permits. Item number eight, will be moved to the regular agenda? Commissioners, do you have a motion to approve all of them except item seven and number eight?
No, move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion fastest. For those items that have been approved, you're free to go. Number seven?
Let's give them a minute, Madam Chair. Let's give them a minute to get out of the... Have a good night.
Thank you. You could just have gone to read that little legal description.
Yeah, it takes forever, doesn't it? Do you find it tangled up at all?
Good.
But when I was laughing, it was sore.
Thursday. Yeah, that was quite the legal description. I just hope they got it right.
All right, I'll get started here. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. And before you, you have item number seven, that's conditional use permit number 1927 for salvage repair, collision repair, spray paint, automotive repair, and used car sales on the property. There's the location map of the property. This item originally became notice to staff as a complaint, as somebody has complained that there was salvage yard operating on the property. The petitioner came in after staff reached out to them and to obtain the permits that is needed to operate the salvage yard. The petitioner is requesting multiple functions, including the salvage, repair, collision, repair, and paint, and use of car sales and storage on the site. The plan also includes to expand the property uses by constructing a new building for potential rental space for, say, other clients that might want space in the industrial park, as well as space for the spray painting of vehicles. Petitioner has submitted a site plan. It's kind of trying to make it as easy to see as possible. And the site plan shows the lot layout and the building locations, including building number, our letter C here, which would be the new proposed building. The fence was built around the property, most of the property, to try to protect the view of dismantled vehicles. Petitioner also has submitted a narrative that has been submitted to you as well. As a conditional use permit, you're, we should consider several criteria, and I'll go through them now. Criteria one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the surrounding area for uses already permitted and upon property values within the surrounding area. This use is already in an area of industrial area. There is potential visual impacts on it that have been noted through complaints and some other impacts that could be brought along from fluids and environmental impacts. The visual impacts can be reduced through the existing metal fence, and as well as building C in the north side of the property will help reduce visual impacts from the north. Staff does recommend that there's no visual, or no vehicle parts that are going to be stored east of building B here. And I have a little thing later in the PowerPoint for that, to reduce the visibility harm from the interstate. But the... Yes. Number two, the effect upon normally and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for use as promised in the area. The area is nearly fully developed. In addition, the use of the property for stored and repair of vehicles is generally compatible with area uses. Number three, the utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. The property is largely developed. It already has two buildings and the parking, it has the fence, and is being utilized as it is. The property is required because of the hard surfacing of Wild Clover Circle. It is required to have hard-surface driveways and parking for customers. The petitioner must hard-surface the driveway or road, which I also have a description, because there's a portion of the driveway here that is gravel yet. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Other than the hard-surface parking area that staff intends on addressing through condition, the loading and unloading of vehicles and equipment shall not be placed within the right-of-way, and there is enough space in the property to do that. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odors, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so none of these will constitute nuisance. The property was brought into the Planning Department because of visual concerns of junk and environmental factors such as automotive fluids. The property is located within an industrial zoned area, and it already has an existing six-foot-tall fence around the storage area. The petitioner has written in his narrative that he will have proper storage and disposal of oil, antifreeze, and et cetera for the car fluids. Conditions such as indoor storage and proper containers can be placed on the permit. The South Dakota DE&amp;R, Department of Environment and Natural Resources, does monitor air pollution and requires permits for commercial paint booths as well, and that should be a requirement of this conditional use permit. Number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive The Invision 2535 Comprehensive Plan indicates industrial areas in the county should be encouraged to develop in cohesive and attractive manner. This property has already taken the step to construct a six-foot-tall fence, and in addition, when well, when correctly done, when recycling of automotive vehicles and parts is an important part of the life cycle of vehicle, save resources such as steel and salvageable parts. Staff does find the, find the use compatible with other industrial uses in the area and recommends approval. I'll go through some photos here. So this is the plan for a new building that's going to be partitioned, two different parts. Some of the visuals of the building. This is the existing site conditions. There is a fence, as noted, and this gate that visually blocks the property. There's the existing parking in the background here, and then the gravel driveway that connects into that concrete parking. So nobody was available at the time when I took photos, so I just kind of blindly tried to take photos of this I could. But this is the building on the east side of the property, and moving through the property towards the west. And there's the building in the background. You can see that it is being used with cars that are dismantled, and right here would be where the proposed building would be located in the background. And then this is some views from the interstate. You can see that here in the interstate, the fence does block some, but it is very visible at the same time. But, and this is the spot where staff finds the most concern for visual from the interstate with the tires and the cars and the grass rather than on gravel. So as part of the conditions of approval, this goes through kind of condition number five and nine. This would be the area of no storage, and then the hard-surface area up to the current concrete parking. So with that, I guess, is there any questions?
Jeff?
So Kevin, they were in operation before they realized they needed to have a permit on this?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address, please?
My name is Vitaly, and the address is 47184 Wild Clover Circle. So we, we're a small family-owned business and motor solution in Sioux Falls. We operate from East Rice Street, and we've been there almost 16 years. And we purchased this property up north around, I think it's 2012, and mainly just for storage, storing our vehicles and things like that. We do repairables, so we buy vehicles from accidents, insurance companies, repair them, sell them, and that's what we do from, from in-town. We don't have a lot of parking and room, so we purchased this area to kind of keep, keep some, some of the cars that you acquire when you're doing that kind of work. A lot of the stuff, a lot of vehicles that are on there, right now, there's probably like 50 cars out there, and a lot of them are just, we don't need, they're going to get just recycled, you know, scrapped out. And we get a lot of customers that leave us vehicles that aren't, they don't want to repair anymore and things like that, and we just, you know, keep, keep everything out there. We're, we, we want to work with, with you guys and whatever we have to do to kind of be able to use that property out there for more than what, what we're using it out there right now. Recently, we've had a, we had an accident with an oil spill out there, and we're working with Houston Engineering and Brad there, and we already have a contract trying to fix, fix that, that oil spill. We had a propane tank that we had used oil in, which at first was inside, and then because of room and things like that, we had it outside, and sometime during the winter with snow removal, which we don't even know who or how, when it happened, it got nicked, and we didn't notice the oil up until springtime when all the snow started melting after, you know, after February and March. And we got notified about it, and, because we're not out there a lot, we're just usually in Sioux Falls, and we're working with Brad and the city, DE&amp;ER, or whatever, state people to, to get that fixed up. It's, it's been slow because of wet, it's been really wet, and we need excavators and things like that to get out there, and right now, pretty much, we're waiting on the city to let us know if they'll let us, if they'll let the excavating company move, you know, be able to, to dump that soil and things like that in the Sioux Falls dump. We agree to all conditions and whatever we, you know, whatever is necessary to, to have us use that property to the 100 fullest percent, so.
Any questions for petitioner?
I'm just wondering, what's your typical turnaround on getting the cars from time they come in to the time they go out? Is it fixed, or how long do they got to sit there, I guess, if you don't fix them?
You're talking about the, the stuff out there?
Yeah.
Right now, well, right, right now, it's, we're not fixing anything out there. Right now, out there, they're just kind of storing, you know? It doesn't take very long, you know, to call, to put it on a trailer or call somebody to just to haul them out. They're, most of, most of the vehicles out there don't have much, much value to us, you know?
How long have they been sitting there?
How long have they been sitting there? I mean, they've been accumulating over since 2012 or whatever, when we got that place. And then, I just counted, I think there's like 58 cars out there right now.
Jeff, you have a question?
So Vitaly, you said you don't go out there very much. Is it your plan to be out there all the time then, starting if you get this permit?
Yeah, our, our plan is to, to, to be out there more or to hire people and things like that to do, like body work and things like that, you know, to be out there. And maybe sell cars eventually sometime there.
Any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. We may, we may call you back. Any proponents out there? Any opponents out there that wish to speak? Okay, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is Gary Schwartz, and I own the property just south of this at 47188 Wild Clover Circle. I first met the gentleman in 2012, and they told me at that time they were going to use this as an overflow for their car lot in Sioux Falls, where they just weren't selling that car and they'd bring it out there. Soon after that, I noticed, they put up the fence, I noticed semis coming in there, one or two at a time, and wreck, in the building to the east, they would bring those build, those wrecked semis in there and build one semi and send it back out. These cars have been sitting there since 2012, and they are junk cars. I have actually witnessed people coming out scrapping out of these cars. So it's more of a Nordstrom's scrapyard to me. With my building being to the south, or they are taking away property value for me. It is a very much an eyesore, and when they say they're not doing work right now, I have witnessed them doing work, body repair, cars coming and going from the west building for the last quite a few months. I know there's other property owners out here that have concerns about this place. One of the things I've noticed in the last couple, three months, I have been watching this, and when I go out there, when they say they're going to hire employees, and if I'm out in my yard working, they stare me down, look at me, take notice in who I am, with my vehicle, and I feel very uncomfortable. I feel one of these days, one of my, my property will be vandalized, and I will hold them responsible. Thank you.
Gary? Just a quick question. So semis being repaired, not semis delivering or picking up?
No, I have not seen other than tandem trailers and stuff dropping off vehicles, wrecked vehicles. I've never seen the semis dropped off there, but I, you know, they're sitting out front. Like right now, there is RVs, wrecked RVs in there, there's a bus in there, there's tires still laying around. The east corner of their property where they're saying no storage is fine, but that fence is cut off at an angle, and there's still more of their property right there. And the only way they can get to that piece of property is through my property to clean it up. And there's thistles growing that are four to five feet tall right now, and it's never been taken care of. I have a few things out inside my shop, but I do take care of my property. I use landscape people to make sure it's fertilized and weeds taken care of, and I take control of everything.
Any other questions for him? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Please state your name and address.
I'm Todd Olander. I own the property directly to the north at 25778 and 25776. I basically, I have a copy of, copies of everything if anybody wants it there. Basically this spring, all right, I'm out there cleaning up my yard, you know, I'm cleaning up the whatever, after the snow melted off, and I noticed there was oil that had been spilled and ran underneath my property to the, you know. And I chalked it up. Mistakes happen, and I won't have to put Roundup in my detention or whatever now. now. And then, this, this spring, after got time, first time to mow, I noticed there's not a little bit of oil, there's a lot of oil. And it is a big, big mess. I don't know how, I don't know how much oil was in that repurposed propane tank, but I know, I understand a lot of oil goes, or a little bit of oil goes a long ways. But there is, I mean, I have photos, I have photos of the oil slick, I have documentation from the Department of Environmental Services, where it was supposed to have been cleaned up, and I believe now, in the latest letter that I have was dated today, twenty-fourth, today's Monday, right? Okay, so that was dated today from the Department, Natural Resources, okay, on where the, where it's going, okay? From the understanding that I got from the, the Washington, who's cleaning up? Washington, who? Houston, Houston Engineering. Okay, so Houston Engineering proposed them a number to use for the excavator to excavate everything out, and from what I was told, that number really didn't, I mean, it's gonna be a very, very huge number for the cleanup. But didn't like that, and you're, I think you're trying to find a different option with whomever to clean it up. I don't know, do you all want copies of all my pics and stuff? If you want them, you can sure have them. All right. The, I mean, the oil spill is both on my property, it's through the culvert, it's on the interstate side, and it's underneath the interstate fence, and it's on the east side of the interstate now. I mean, it's, it's a mess. As far as the material coming around, the proposed site of where there's not to be any storage, there, the, that used to be all full of used tires, like car tires, stacked six foot high to the building, basically, you know? I wish I had a pointer, but I don't. The other concern that I have is, I know at one point in time, when, I remember when Tri-State first built that east building, they didn't pour the floor in concrete. Is it still a dirt floor? Are they still working out of there? Is it, I don't know, I don't know what the inside of everything looks like. I do my best to keep, keep everything, and everything, everybody out there does their best to maintain their properties. It's, it's a mess out there. I don't know. Go ahead. I can answer whatever anybody wants. I don't know, I'm not a good speaker.
Any questions for him? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Tracy Higgins. I own the building at, right across the road, four eight one, four seven one eight five Wild Clover. I have the same concerns that these gentlemen do, as far as our property values. Everybody out there works hard to keep their properties clean and neat, and, and we respect each other. And I guess I'm concerned that they haven't been following the laws and the rules for the past seven years, and this is what we've got. And is it gonna stop? Is it gonna change if we allow more uses of the property?
Any questions for her? Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ryan Byes, and I, me and my partner own Building Sprinkler, which is kind of across the cul-de-sac to the south and the east. And we have some concerns of the property value. We leased the building right now with a first right of refusal, so the greedy part, I mean, kinda wants them to stay there so I can get it cheaper in ten years. But I think they should be commended for their cleanup efforts they did do this spring. My concern is more that it gets back to the way it was and what that does to our property values.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair?
Jeff?
What would it take, Ryan, to get it back to what it was? I guess, was it prairie grass and antelope or?
I mean, with the stacks of tires that were mentioned before, and like, I've, I work a lot on Saturdays and I've seen them haul a ton of stuff out of there. They've worked hard to clean it back to where it is. My concern more is getting back to how it was left go since two thousand and twelve with the big stacks of tires and weeds.
Anyone else? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Will Vanderlinde. We own Medical Waste Transport on the west side. We cannot really see a whole lot of their property besides the building. We can see over the fence on the very north side where our loading dock is. I'm pretty sure that camper's been there since day one. If anybody has anything about them not working normal hours, I can say that whoever drives that pickup, he, he's there every day, and either his reverse doesn't work or he just likes to drive through our grass. But I don't really appreciate neighbors like that. I did actually see a van trailer from a semi come through once through our security cameras at night, but I mean, there's a lot of action at night anywhere, because there's a lot of truckers out there. But like I say, I can't see a whole lot of property with the tires and vehicles, but I know there's a lot of junk back there. I wouldn't call it salvage, I would call it junk, so, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry, you can forward again if you'd like to.
One of the other things that's happened on my piece of property is on, be the north part of my property and where the fence line goes from the cul-de-sac, kind of close to where the subject project is going. The electrical transformer is on their side of the property, and it's blocked in. So if anything ever went wrong with that, it's a locked gate, and if anything went wrong with my piece of property with electricity, I would have to get into there. Right now, they are blocking that easement from Excel Energy, and I don't think that would be right. And I understand what Ryan was saying, that they did do a cleanup this spring. However, I think that cleanup was done in interest of this meeting tonight. There is still, their weeds in the property are terrible. There are many junk cars. And when they, when their employees, I don't know if there's employees or just hot rodders that come and go and they do a car repair. I think it's more of a bunch of buddies getting together and hot rodding their cars. And the painting that has, has happened there over the last year or more is, there's, Boxey's car lot is down the road from here, and I did invite him to here tonight. And the easements, the conditional use permits that he had to go through just to get his facility up and running, the hard surface, there was talk about that they would hard surface where they're gonna park cars and sell them, but at the same point in time, the main gate where they come and go, that should be hard surface. Now, Boxey's had to hard surface his entire property where they're not hard surfacing all that gravel inside their property. So I think there, for the last six years, they've gotten by without a permit, and now they're trying to request one. I was down at the county a year ago, and I was, I received this permit, which I found was nonvalid because the new owners bought it, and I don't know if they were working off this permit, but one of the things on it was junk and salvage materials, including unlicensed or inappropriate vehicles. Waste or used tires shall not accumulate on the property. That has happened for six years, and nothing's been done. So, now that they know they're under pressure, they want to increase their business, I don't know if they will abide by the law that is set by the county. So, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Petitioner, you want to come forward again, please? Can you address any of that?
Well, it's, I mean, I'm not denying any of it. We have cars out there, like I said, you know, junk cars out there that don't, don't, really don't have any value to us. I mean, when we got the property, we knew that we were gonna store things there, and that's why we, we put up a fence, you know? There's some, there, there've been some tires there, we moved a lot of tires. We don't have a lot of building space and, you know, we're really tight on the space. I'm, I don't, I'm not denying the fact that, you know, when we got the violation letter, this is not moving us forward, you know? We, I'm not gonna say that, that that's not the case, it's true, you know? We got the letter, we know that things kind of been let go there, you know what I mean? And, and we want to do everything to, to make it right, you know, whatever that means, to clean up the cars, to get rid of the stuff, to, to be able to do, to do, be able to do business from that place, you know, which we understand. And if you drive by Motor Solutions on East Rice Street, you know, and look at how we do business out there, and, and we try to keep things nice and clean and, and proper and, and all that stuff, you know, by the law. We're nobody's, we're not trying to break any laws, you know what I mean? Or, or cause enemies or anything like that. I apologize to all our neighbors for putting up with, with all of our stuff out there. I, I get it. We got that place, we knew it's a really nice place, we knew that everything's really nice and organized there, and, and people keep things really clean there, you know? But just over the years, like, things have just been stacking up, piling up out there. And to kind of, we want to clean the place up and to be able to use it and, and do, do business out of there correctly. I think the junkyard thing, I mean, we don't have a junkyard, we don't, we can't probably, we don't, we don't care to have a junkyard, we don't sell parts or dismantle vehicles. But we accumulated a lot of vehicles over the past, you know, eight, seven years, so.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Vitali, I tell you, I'm pretty disturbed about this oil spill and stuff. What about the other fluids that you might be dealing with, antifreeze, brake fluid, transmission fluid? Do you burn them? Do you haul them away, or do you just put them into propane tanks?
The only reason we have oil out there at that time is that, on Rice Street, we have an oil burner heater, you know? And so we're collecting oil to use it out there, you know, and that's the only reason. We don't drain any fluids or dismantle cars or any, you know, like, out there, you know? Most of the vehicles that have, and we can go through those pictures and, and look at them, I mean, most of the vehicles that are smashed up and things like that, they don't have any fluids in there, you know what I mean? There's no antifreeze in there anymore, there's, we're not pulling out engines and things like that out there. Most of those cars that are out there, we got from people just leaving their junk at our place, you know?
But you have a locked gate too, right?
We have a locked gate.
And they're still dropping them off?
No, well, we, we've, we brought a couple of vehicles over there, because we have, we have, we get these cars, customers don't feel like they want to repair, it's too expensive, you know, they give us a title, they say get rid of it, you know what I mean? So we, we take them and we, we just, we kind of store them there. But our, we want to clean them up and get rid of them.
Any other questions for petitioner?
Yeah, I got one question. I'm a little confused with that propane tank. You just said that none of the vehicles there had oil or any fluids in them, so how did that get put there and why? And if you're there for storage, how are you gonna transport it to wherever you're gonna use it at?
Okay, so the, the, we purchased the propane tank, and we've had like fifty-five gallon drums of, of used oil that we accumulated.
And that came from?
Not from the property, just from our everyday changing oil and working on our cars.
From at your other business?
At our other business, yeah. We've taken them out there. We've had people just bring us oil, because they know we, you know, burn oil, and that's how we heat the shop. We purchased the tank and filled it up, assuming maybe one day that we would use an oil burner heater out there, you know, for, for, if we're ever using it in the shop. Kind of, kind of why we, why we kept it out there. And we had an accident and nobody, honestly, we don't even know how it happened or when it happened, and who knows? It could have been vandalism even, you know, we're not even sure how, how, how it happened, but it happened, it was really unfortunate. And the neighbor talked about talking with Houston, so Houston talked to their excavator people, you know, which was really very expensive. So we said, hey, can we get some bids from other excavation companies? And we were, you know, we, we talked with A1, or what are they called? First rate, and it was like half, half the price, you know, of what Houston was talking about. And we're communicating with Houston, and they don't mind us getting another excavating company to do their job. We're just trying to save, we're little guys, we're trying to save as much money as we can and...
So how are you coming on that, getting it cleaned up?
So they put booms in and things like that, where the, for, to kind of collect some of that. And pretty much what they want us to do is remove like four to six inches of soil and excavate that stuff out. And they're talking with City of Sioux Falls to see if we can dump it in, in the, in the dump, Sioux Falls dump. So kind of we're held out on there, because we can start digging things, but where are you gonna put it? You know what I mean? That's kind of where we're, well, two reasons we're slowed down. First of all, the crazy price they found on excavating, and the second reason is to where are you gonna put it? You know, where are you gonna move all that stuff? So we're, we're on hold on, on that.
So is it true that some oil is on the east side of the interstate too? And if so, is there a culvert that, that's how it got on the east side of the interstate?
Yeah, yeah, there's a culvert, it kind of went down and then went across the interstate. They sampled, soil sampled.
Okay, yeah.
And that's where they, they say there's something there.
But it definitely is you, or it may not have been you?
It's probably, I mean, it's, it's probably us, because it went down that way.
You're admitting it, okay, thanks.
Yeah, it's, we're not saying that it's not us, it's probably us.
Any other questions for petitioner? Any other one? Any, anybody else in the audience want to speak for this item?
This oil spill that he's talking about actually does go across interstate, and it continues around, around the storage to the right side of the, and there's a wetland that goes all the way around there. That wetland is also the back of my home. So I'm getting hit twice with this mistake. And it's, you know, they can say we're sorry and all that, but there is a lot of stuff that's going on that they have not been professional about at this place.
Any other questions for him? Okay, I'm gonna close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Jeff?
It's clear to me that it's, it's a mess. It's also, I think, been our experience that these motor vehicle type operations often are a mess. And that said, I think that our top priority should be to get it cleaned up. And I think if, if we can defer action on this and give them some more time to try to get it cleaned up and report back, that that might be the best solution, as opposed to encouraging them to abandon the operation. And I...
Is that a motion?
Not yet, I want to hear the wisdom of my fellows here.
Okay. Becky?
I, I agree with Jeff. I'm hesitant to do any kind of approval tonight when there's still so much potential issue there, and I would like to see it deferred and give the applicant time to address those issues.
And I'd kind of like to echo what everybody has said so far, and, you know, if we just totally deny them right now, possibly it'd be no cleanup at all, so it'd be just a mess sitting there. So I, I would like to defer it so they can get their matters in order, so we can actually make a decision on this.
Mike?
Just that, it's, we need to give them time to clean up, so it's not just a, a short sighted action that we've had thus far. Take it all the way to the finish line and come back and go from there.
Question for staff, Madam Chair. Do we have a meeting in August?
Yeah.
Okay, I wonder if I could ask Vitali if that might be sufficient time to report back with a clean bill of health? Vitaly, if we were to give you to August twenty-sixth, will you get that cleaned up?
Yeah, we can, yeah, our intentions are to get it cleaned up. Can we, um, I just wanna be very clear on what, you know, 'cause I don't wanna come back August twenty-sixth and we're still talking about the same thing, you know what I mean?
If there's still oil in August twenty-sixth, we're not gonna be happy.
Yeah.
The oil thing, that's already being cleaned up. So that's gonna work its way out, you know? That hasn't, we're not gonna be doing that ourselves. But the cars and, and, um, you know, all that type of stuff out there. Yeah, we should, we should be able to, we should be able to, um, get that in order. Does that mean we can't have any cars out there? I mean, I, you know?
Let's make sure they're this week's cars, not twenty-twelve cars. How about, uh, would mon, one month be enough or do you need two months?
I mean, I'll take the two months just to be safe. I mean, you know, instead of rushing into something. So...
Well, I sure as heck hope with that, we can get some action on it and, and we don't wanna put, uh, put you out of business, but to get you into business, you need to take care of business.
Right.
Uh, Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer action till August.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Um, I tend to agree with the other commissioners. I'm concerned about the safety with the spill, so to speak, and the timeframe. And I think that's pretty much what's been dated up here. I mean, we, we don't like to put people out of business, but we, uh, it's always a neighbor versus neighbor and, you know, make it friendly for everybody so that it works.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you. That was my motion, August twenty-sixth.
Okay, motion is being seconded to defer this to August twenty-sixth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
David, item number eight.
Good evening, Planning Commission, David Heindl, County Planning Department. Conditional use permit nineteen dash twenty-eight is to allow seed and chemical sales on the property, which is actually located, it's at four eight two four, it's actually just west of four eight two four eight two sixty-eighth street. This is about four miles east of Sioux Falls. And the, the property itself is located in, outlined in red on the map in front of you. You see encompasses about twenty-eight, twenty-eight point two eight acres. Um, the, the petitioner has provided a site plan along with this request as well, which actually positions the proposed building that they're requesting into the very southwest corner of the, the subject property, as you'll see on the, the next map here. This just shows a zoomed in view of the, the whole property itself. Um, there is the existing property right here, which is that, that's where the address was at. Um, and then the, the building, the proposed building would be located directly west of that property. The site plan shows, this is just an even more zoomed in view of the petitioner's request for the agricultural or retail, chemical and seed business on the property. As you can see, there's the driveway that comes direct, that would come directly off of the county highway, which is paved road. Um, and then it goes directly into the property to the north. You can see some of the parking areas that the petitioner has laid out on the site plan, as well as a, a building on the property. And there's a septic tank and drain field off to the east of that building. And then you can see some, uh, bins off to the west of the proposed, where the proposed building would be located. The, the petitioner has mentioned that there will only be herbicides and fungicides stored in this building as a part of the use. Um, no anhydrous ammonia will be stored on this property as part of this conditional use permit request. That would be a separate conditional use if the petitioner were to choose that. But what you're considering is the, um, the retail sales of chemical and seeds, um, for what they are requesting right now. This, so just going through some of the pictures that we took out on the property, this is looking at where that proposed driveway would be, as I, as I mentioned on the site plan. The truck right there is right on the highway. As you can see, there's a residence off to the south of where that driveway will be. That's actually in, in Iowa, um, because this is, this abuts right on the state line. This is just looking south there. And then this is looking from the south side of the highway on the, the Iowa line or Iowa side, towards where the, the building would be off in the distance there. And then this is a view of the highway right away. As you can see, the ditches there, um, the drainage. And then there are some houses off in the distance and, as well as some, uh, cell towers that are in the area. Um, this is a heavy area for cell towers, um, and then looking back east there. This is looking to the south of the property. As you can see, the driveway that extends into Iowa for that residence across the street to the south. And again, that's the same driveway there towards that residence that's directly across the street from the proposed use. And this is looking back towards the east along the county highway. As you can see, there's another cell tower there. Um, and then the driveway would extend off in this distance and the proposed building would be located in this area right here. And then this is looking towards the northeast, towards where that building would sit. Approximately, it looks like kind of a, a dark spot there. That's about where the building would be located. And off in the distance, you can see some other buildings there. That was the building to the east. There's a, uh, fairly large agricultural accessory building located on, um, what is, there's kind of a hill there. So the, the property does slope up, um, which brings all the slope back down according to what the USGS topographic, four and a half minute to, topographic map states, a lot of the property is sloped down towards, back towards the west or coming to the spot where this picture is. And then this is just, um, rounding that out. This is a view from the south. As you can see, the sign was placed on the property for notification, um, as required by the zoning ordinance. And, uh, right now, this is currently just an agricultural field, um, as well as, given from the pictures, there are other agricultural areas in, in the distance. So just going through some of the conditional use permit criteria, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. Due to the nature of the proposed business, there is likely to have a negative effect upon the use and enjoyment of property in the immediate vicinity. However, the addition of an agricultural type warehouse building should not affect property values in the surrounding area. Um, staff does recognize that the storage of certain agricultural chemicals can pose health risk, um, as well as other safety risks for surrounding property owners, including the, um, the residential properties in the area. Condition, or number two, the effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. This area is primarily agricultural with about a half dozen residential acreages that are kinda spread out along the county highway to the east and, or mostly to the west of this property, um, with some to the east. There should be no effect on the normal and orderly development of surrounding vacant land with the addition of an agricultural accessory building. Although the, the siding of this proposed land use may discourage existing or future residents from locating a residential dwelling near this property, um, which is determined, as we know, by the, the number and availability of residential building eligibilities. The Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan identifies the future growth of surrounding vacant property as remaining primarily agricultural land use. Three, the utilities, access, roads, drainage and then, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. The, the applicant needs to gain approval from the Minnea County Highway Department for the driveway or culvert permit to the proposed land use. All of, all other necessary facilities will be provided to the construction of the proposed accessory building. The, the petitioner did not supply a drainage plan for this particular use for managing water runoff from the proposed building and the site itself. Um, as I've mentioned, the, the drainage is typically from the east to the property going west, according to what the natural topography is. The, so number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The petitioner is required to provide parking areas in conformance with the zoning ordinance for basically the number of vehicles, as well as delivery vehicles on the subject property. In that case, the petitioner should be, should provide a minimum of two parking spaces for each three employees on maximum shift, with additional space to accommodate all trucks and other vehicles used in connection with the use. Petitioner has outlined in the narrative for just having one person working at the proposed use with potentially more employees to be added if, given the seasons, given the seasonal nature of the proposed use or business. The number, uh, or, skipping ahead of myself for a second there, excuse me. No parking is allowed in the county highway at any time. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The petitioner has indicated that there will be sales activity occurring at the proposed use depending on the seasons. The number of inbound deliveries of products in the off-season will be about fifteen to twenty, with some loads by semi-truck. The narrative does state tho, that there will be approximately seventy-five visits throughout the entire year, which includes customer pickups from the business. At a minimum, this seed and storage area should be locked and secured when, in not in operation of the business. And there is a condition on this permit for the hours of operation for those non-business hours. Six, health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed agricultural seed and chemical retail business will be located in an area identified as long-term agriculture in the Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. The primary goal of the, the plan is to protect, preserve and promote agricultural uses and the economic viability of farming operations. The proposed use is an appropriate complement to the agricultural economy and provides support for the agricultural operations in the area and should not affect the health, safety and general welfare of the public. The agriculturally related operation of agricultural seed and chemical sales should fit with the intent of the plan. This is an area with quite a number of residential acreages in the immediate vicinity that may pose certain nuisances with regards to the nature of the proposed business. Um, however, there are other locations throughout the rural area that have allowed seed and chemical sales, um, as you may recall, um, in, in other areas. So recommendation, staff finds that the proposed use for seed and chemical retail sales an appropriate use for the surrounding area and conforms to the goals and policies of the Invision twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit nineteen dash twenty-eight with the following conditions. And there are eight conditions on there. I can read the conditions. If you have any questions on them or any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Jeff?
Is this, uh, in the Red Rock Corridor area?
No.
Any other questions for David? Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward, state your name and address?
Thing Remyus, uh, the address of the, this property. Is it what you're asking for?
Well, yours, where you live or?
Two six six seven four Brownstone Avenue, Rowena.
Any questions for the petitioner?
What were you planning on selling then for chemical wise then? Is that, you tend on just selling seed or chemical like?
Well, right now I just have a seed contract, but...
Were you looking to expand to chemical or anything like that?
Yeah, yep. And that's I have intention of, you know, finding somewhere to secure chemical product from.
Were you looking at selling like totes or were you selling jugs or what were you thinking?
Package and totes. I mean, just kinda depending on the growers' needs. So it'd be like shuttles, you know, two hundred and fifty gallons would be in what most of the totes are. And a package, two and a half gallons per jug.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. We may call you back up. Any other proponents out there? Any opponents? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Uh, Jason and Tammy Snyder's. Uh, we live at, uh, ten ninety-nine, uh, one hundred street, just directly south of the property.
We're at the driveway that they showed in the pictures. We're the residents that live across, uh, directly across from the driveway, so...
We're here just, uh, I guess just to see what was going on. We didn't know a lot of information on what's going on. That whole area is, right now, a lot of residential or agricultural. And we're not trying to be, you know, we're just kinda finding out more information on it. You know, if he's doing a, you know, you know, a chemical, you know, fertilizer and all that, I guess a concern in regards to, you know, containment, drainage, um...
We have a creek that actually runs right in front of our property that dumps into the Big Sioux River. Um, we have three small children. My concern about the driveway is, is that the bus driver pulls into our driveway to drop off the kids and has to reverse back out of the driveway. And so the activity that will increase on that road concerns me because it's during their business hours as well. So I guess the driveway is probably more of a concern where that location was 'cause it was like literally it's directly outside of ours.
Yes, well, I guess we didn't know if that was an option of a different location for a driveway.
Or, you know, there is like, I think his family owns that whole area. So there's like other options, I guess. I don't know. I guess we weren't aware that there was actual, the silage where the chemical will be stored, we weren't aware of that.
That's, I guess, another creek.
I called the city and that wasn't informed that there was gonna be, you know, the, where the chemical will be stored.
Yeah, storage bin.
Just for the seed, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Seed storage, not, not, nothing.
I thought he had said that that's where, um...
What was that? Was it seed for the storage bins?
Yeah, I would assume so.
Is that what it said, where the storage bins would be?
David, will you come forward?
Madam Chair, I believe the site plan identifies it as grain bins.
And then two, it is part of the Red Rock Corridor. It goes up to the South Dakota Iowa border. It states that in the Red Rock Corridor Development Plan. It borders two hundred and sixty-eighth street.
David?
So the, the Red Rock Corridor, sorry, David Heindl, County Planning Department. The Red Rock Corridor extends half mile east direction from South Dakota State Highway forty-two. And it runs all the way to the state border. I think the state border that you're referring to is at the intersection of two sixty-eighth and South Dakota State Highway forty-two. Um, that's the, that's where it runs up against the, the two sixty-eighth street or what you live on.
Right.
So it doesn't run all the way to the property right here.
They will, they will probably encounter like granite as well. So they'll have to blast probably if they're gonna be like, uh, 'cause they did have to blast, Lewis and Clark went in front of our property and they had a blast up the street, so...
That's just part of that environmental concern in regards to the septic. Um, we do know that there's two quartzite in the area in the property. And then that's just another question, I guess, a concern we have in regards to their septic and holding facilities. And I guess a question in regards to containment and, um, their drainage, I guess.
And the property value of ours because it'll be like directly across the street, so... 'Cause there is no other commercial businesses in the area, which I didn't really understand how it's a agriculture or not, it doesn't have to be converted to a business.
Or commercial.
Even though it sounds like it's a commis, so it's kinda confusing to me, I guess.
Agriculture is an industry actually, so...
Yeah, but it's, he's gonna be running a business out of, so it's not a commercial property?
Right.
Agriculture-related business, so it's allowable in the egg zone. And it's not in the Red Rock Corridor, just to clear that. I think the infusion is, there's quartzite there and that's...
It's a half mile either side of forty-two and it goes, hits two fifty-eight or whatever it is when it gets over by the Iowa Casino.
Oh, I think it said, I thought it was on two hundred and eight, two, or four hundred and eighty, whatever it is.
Got a lot of rock there though, definitely.
And again, like I said, we're, we're more just for information, for more information on it. We're not trying to be the bad neighbors stopping the business either, but we just have concerns, environmental's concerns and, and just for, um, value of our property and, um, and there is, there, right now, there is no commercial business in the area. There's a lot of other residential, so, uh, we're not the only ones.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else care to address this item? Please state your name and address, please.
Dan and Amy Akas. Uh, we own the property to the six point six acres to the west, directly to the west, which also the pictures didn't really, uh, do, do justice to what we own. We do have a building eligibility... We do have a building eligibility on there. You know, once again, we can probably agree and say that, you know, we're not here to, you know, cause a lot of problems and, and, you know, change everybody's future plans, but at the same, on the same note, I guess, we just want some more information as to what's going on. You know, all we basically stumbled across was that tiny little sign, and here we are today, so... I do want to point out a couple things on what was read by the gentleman here under the conditional use permit criteria, and this is regards to property value as well. That first paragraph, in the middle of the paragraph, basically jumped down to where, however, it says the addition of an agricultural-type warehouse building should not affect the property values in the surrounding area. But if you go to the next number, that statement is basic to me, it contradicts itself. It says, although the sitting of the proposed land use may discourage existing or future residents from locating a residential dwelling near the subject property, which is determined by the available building eligibilities, and that means us. I guess our questions were, is if there's anything to ease our concerns, you know, what could be done, or, I noticed on that one picture, if you can maybe go to it, the sixteen-foot grain bins? That is, well, it would be the drawn-up site. Or is that something I have to do? So, you know, that property line is, if I'm, if I'm reading correctly, is forty feet from our fence line, which is actually further than I thought it was going to be, which is good for drainage concerns and things of that, you know, water coming off the building. You know, it'd be nice to know how big the bins are, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be poking into every little detail, because, you know, I'm not, we're not opposed to somebody making a living, but we just, we just have concerns, you know, obvious property value concerns. Our sources tell us that, you know, I don't, I don't know, you know, beg your pardon on who wrote these statements in here, but our information, our sources are, it's about a hundred and eighty degrees off as to what it's going to do to the value. So, and if there's things that we can do, I'm all for it, you know? I'm not opposed. I don't want to be like the other gentleman neighbor that I just met tonight, basically, that we just met, not directly, but just want to know what can be done to ease our concerns. Thank you.
Well, the one thing I'd like to add is have an idea about the drainage, because when it rains, that area floods, and so the water will all come down to our west property, and we, you saw that, and he said that too. So there isn't a plan on how that drainage is going to be set up. So I would like to know that piece, because it will affect the, across the street too, because that water gets so high, especially this spring. If you drove by that area, that area was flooded. And so that is a concern of, like, if you, you're going to do seed now, but if you end up doing chemical or fertilizer, I mean, you said fertilizer too, just how is that going to impact all that water? Because up on the hill, it is a huge hill, and everything is flowing directly towards the west, or the southwest that way. So I'd like to see what that plan is going to look like, because, I mean, we all know that chemicals are harmful to us, and we have to make sure that we're, like it said, caring for the general pop, public, and, you know, if we end up, you know, I mean, that's our land, you know, and so, and everyone that lives around there, we obviously support them as well, too. So I'd like to see what that is going to look like, because that is a huge, that's a huge deal, because, like I said, like, when the water was high this year, I mean, it's high, and it's going to flow, so...
Madam Chair.
Jeff?
Dan and Amy, looking at the photo there, I didn't see you had a building on that property. You have eligibility. So do you actually live on the next plat to the west?
No, no, we don't live there currently, right now.
Okay, you own, you own the land and you have an eligibility?
Yes, my wife and I purchased this years ago, I believe, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Years go by, with the intention of, you know, we saved for that and bought that piece of ground close to Sioux Falls. Our kids' activities are in Sioux Falls. And just the intentions of building someday, and we feel that that's coming sooner than later.
How big a lot is that?
It's six point six acres. That includes the ditch as well.
Thank you.
I do want to add, for Colton's sake, that I know that, you know, when he, when, I don't own that well, but I know that when plans are presented, I, in regards to the other cases that we sat and heard tonight, I don't feel that that's going to happen. I don't feel it's going to be a disaster zone, if you will. I, I believe that it'll be nice and neat, but I guess that is our concern, just, you know, once again, our sources tell us it's, it's going to ding us, if you will, and, you know, we did save up for that, and then now our plans are kind of changed a little bit, but we just want to know if there's something that can be done, you know, maybe cosmetically, or I am kind of curious to, how tall those bins are. You know, the sixteen-foot, I'm guessing, is the circumference of the bin, so...
Thank you. Any other, sir, will you come forward? State your name and address?
Jerry, we, and I live at one oh zero zero two Arthur Avenue, Larchwood, Iowa. And I actually didn't come to this meeting for this, I came for item number two. But I just happened to have a comment, I would like to be a proponent of it, because I think competition is good, and I like to see seed sales, and I understand the concerns of the neighbors, but I just think it's a good thing, and I do agree that they will take good care of it. The other thing I'd like to ask is, how do you go about notifying neighbors? What are the rules on that? I got no notification on this, and I want to live up the road about a quarter to three eighths of a mile. And I do live in Iowa, so is the state line, the, you notify people in Iowa? How does that work?
The notification requirement is five hundred feet.
Okay.
It's going to be on five hundred feet.
Over five hundred feet, but not a lot. Okay? That's all I have to say.
It's greater if you were putting in a hog burn or something.
Come forward again? I'm sure you've heard some of the concerns with your neighbors, so to speak. Is there any of those items that you could address at all?
It sounds like it's mostly a visual concern, and from that aspect, I mean, it's going to be a professional business. It's kind of a nice, well-made shed. I mean, landscaping, it's not going to be a fricking dump with fertilizer trucks and chemical trucks and stuff like that sitting around. I mean, it's going to be a well-manicured business. And as far as the drainage and stuff, I don't, I mean, the, I don't, there's no water that comes off of that hill that makes it past our property fence, which would be that line there on the left of the site plan. There's a, the low spot is to the east of there, and that's where the water collects and sits, and, I mean, it wasn't able to be planted this spring. So I mean, that's where it stops and comes down. And, yeah, I don't, I don't really know how the water, the drainage would affect the neighbors, you know?
Madam Chair?
Doug?
I heard it several times. What do you know the size of the bins will be right now?
No, I know the circumference, but then that, the bins are years down the road. I mean, that, two years, three years, four years, five years might be put up at some point, but the height, the size, the circumference there, it's all to scale, but I don't remember what the circumference is, twelve feet, sixteen feet, somewhere in there.
Sixteen feet on the plan.
Sixteen feet, okay.
How high are they going to be?
The height, it really, it will vary across them. I mean, they could vary from twenty feet to thirty feet, depending on how many, you know, it's, and there might be four big ones and two little ones, you know?
Right.
I'm just not sure at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You know, if it's tall, shorter ones are better, then put in more short ones and fewer tall ones, I guess, you know?
Jeff, do you have a question?
Just to, you know, the Snyder's across the street there, you know, with the school bus and stuff, you know, if there's a conflict between the traffic, you know, semis coming in, and the school bus and stuff, is there, maybe you could visit with them and see what might work for a tweak, you know, maybe a wider entrance into your property, so they don't have to cut it so tight or something? But I think some communication there could really do well.
Absolutely.
And you will be neighbors for a long time.
Any other questions? Mike?
I do have one question. When you selected the site plan originally, I see kind of it's in that southwest corner. Is there any consideration, you know, thinking, hearing the concerns, just essentially marrying that and putting that in the southeast corner of your property?
That's probably my brother's property and not, I mean, that's his.
So you don't own this entire track nine here?
Oh, that's right at the bottom of that terrace? Or if you could go to the...
Is this where he's looking?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so essentially, you know, you're in the southwest corner.
Mm-hmm.
Place in your, in my simple mind, it alleviates concern in the school bus and gets you away from, and Amy, but...
Mm-hmm, that's a lot of, that's the hill that it would require a lot of dirt work to make a spot level enough to put a business there.
Okay.
Ma'am, you'll have to come forward again, because nobody can hear what's, what you're asking.
This is actually going to be on TV.
Yeah.
I think he's got a good idea, if you could be even moved over to the east a little bit to avoid...
Could you please speak into the mic? They can't hear you either.
I'm just curious, yeah, like he said, if you would be considered to move it to the east, because you, when we drove by it too, that, is that driveway going to be the one that's currently there, where you're going to start the prop, start your business? Because it is directly across from their house, and so I can see their concerns, so, and it is flat for a ways, so I, just throwing out that idea, if you'd ever consider moving it down a little ways.
Is that a possibility, sir?
That spot that I was talking, where the water accumulates, would be at the bottom of those terraces. That whole hill slopes down, and to move it all the way to the flattest...
Here, you can use this and show them where it's, where is it pond? You can just use that mouse, that red dot.
These lighter areas in here are all terraces. This is all a hill, and this area here would be where the water accumulates and settles. So this would be a very wet area, require a lot of additional dirt to try and build it high enough that I wouldn't end up with water in the shed.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So actually, to Mike's point, though, you could actually reverse the floor plan of your thing and put the grain storage things on the east side of the property, and then the driveway would be on the east side of the property, probably not that far off, but it would, it would no longer be directly across from the driveway in Iowa there.
But keep it in that same corner and just flip-flop it, yeah.
Do a mirror image. Now, that would mean that the snow would accumulate over in the, in the ditch, as opposed to on top of your house or your property.
Yeah, the only reason that it was on that driveway is, the driveway was already there. I thought it would, for simplicity, just to put it there, but...
Scott? Come forward.
I hate to throw a wrench in the great plans of moving the driveway, but this is going to have, the driveway will have to be approved by the county highway department, and typically the ASHTO standards, which are the American Society of Highway Engineers, et cetera, typically you want the driveways to line up. So having a slightly offset driveway is not as safe as having driveways that are directly across from each other. So I'm concerned about directing him to offset that. Well, I'm, I think that the driveway will have to be, the driveway approach will have to be approved by the county highway department.
Yeah, we can't micromanage this project, but communication is good.
Exactly. And you're, you're okay, are you acceptable with all the conditions that they have listed about you have to, you have to make sure that they know what the chemicals are regardless of what you're going to be doing?
Yep, these eight listed on this recommendation sheet.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm, make a motion to approve this project, and I threw away my paper, so I don't have the number. Sorry.
Ma'am, we have a motion on the floor right now.
You want to withdraw it?
Right now?
I don't know what else we, we might get here. Like Scott pointed out, there'll still be the highway department, and we can always vote my motion down.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. A motion is being, and seconded to approve item number eight, conditional use print nineteen dash two-eight. Any further discussion? Becky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm wondering about if any tree planting, I know you mentioned, the applicant mentioned, I don't want to micromanage this either, but the applicant mentioned that it would be professionally landscaped. I'm just trying to make sure that this is something that will be, be well-versed, and I'm wondering about adding a condition for trees to be planted there. It looks like that would be to the west, correct? So that's my discussion. Question?
You could always make a substitute motion or something like that.
I think I just wanted the wisdom of my, of my fellow members here.
Any further discussion?
I would say that's a fine idea, but I, I think hopefully the neighbors can work that out themselves, that could, that those trees could be on either property.
Any further discussion? Okay, I have a motion second to approve conditional use print nineteen dash two-eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, there's no old business, no new business. The motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're done.